Good afternoon, everyone. This is the PW Perspective. This is the editor John Reed. We are, if you're live, we are with us today, the Woodbridge Supervisor for the Prince William County School Board, Ms. Lori Williams. And, Williams, thank you so much for joining us. How are you today?
I'm well. How are you?
I am doing well, enjoying this lovely summer. And so, just wanted to have a conversation. And we've been talking with several people, with teachers and staff and other individuals about critical race theory. And that was apropos to really talk to someone who's in a supervisor authority, in a position. Really talk about maybe things you've seen, and maybe there's, are there potential ways that it could be implemented in Prince William County? So, I think it was talk, talk with us about that today, and talk a little bit about some of the things that you've heard in private, in personal conversations, or even grand scale in school board meetings about critical race theory.
Sure. Well, most of critical race theory conversation has come from the public to the schools and school operations. There hasn't been a conversation amongst board members, or at the, anywhere in the local or state level, about teaching kids critical race theory. What I can say is that, in the state of Virginia, all curriculum comes from the state, the Department of, Virginia Department of Education, and flows downward. Critical race theory is not a topic that's been approved for curriculum for pre-K through 12 students. It is a college-level material in its theory, and the design really is to help engage students to be able to think critically about subject matters. And in this case, it's race-related, but there's lots of different types of critical theories. It's not solely just based on race. And that's, I've learned from doing my own research, but I can unequivocally say that there is no desire at this point, or talk at this point of incorporating critical race theory in pre-K through 12 education in the state of Virginia.
Oh, no. And I just want to go back on what you just said a moment ago, because when we really think about CRT, it's really the first one, critical, and the last one, theory, and about critical thinking. And can you just kind of expand upon that, you know, and let people know what type of actual teaching is going on in regards to, you know, critical thinking?
Sure. Well, right now, the state is focused on equity and equity measures, and incorporating that into all forms of pre-K through 12 education. But we know from talking to employers out there, we know from talking to students who have graduated from the school division, that their employers and their adult life outside of public school demands that they be able to think critically about issues, be problem solvers, and learn to work through things on their own. And that, that is important to public education, and that is what we focus on. Teaching our students to be critical thinkers when they leave us, so that they can use the tools that they've learned in pre-K through 12 to go out in the real world and be impactful. We don't, we aren't hearing things from employers, especially our STEM employers, that they want students who can just simply follow directions. They want students who can problem solve. And the only way to do that is to be able to learn, or to have skills that teach students to think critically. Meaning, you know, here's the problem. How can we solve this? It's not gonna, the answer's not gonna be on page two. You need to be able to have conversations with your coworkers and your teammates. You need to be able to think independently, come up with solutions to problems, and then be able to test those solutions out to get a result, resolution to whatever it is at hand. And those are the kinds of skills that we're, we want to teach kids. We don't want kids to read a paragraph and then use their memory to fill in a blank. That's appropriate, of course, at a foundational level. But we want kids to be able to look at a paragraph, read the material, comprehend the material, and then be able to give voice to that material. What is it that they read? What do they think about it? What can they infer from the material? And then take the, that and have further conversations, or be able to apply it to other subjects or other material. That is the heart of what we're trying to do in K through 12 education.
Absolutely. And, you know, actually, you bring that up, because what I do is, I'm a part-time, I'm an out, out-school teacher. And I sort of teach virtual classes about scientific essay, and trying to teach high school students, hey, no, this is important. And I remember, you know, we, growing up, you know, going Woodbridge and things, these are things we learn, you know, scientific math, nature. And it's amazing. And I don't know, maybe it's because of things that, that things have changed as far as what's being taught. But we're trying to apply these principles to students, and it's almost sometimes if we're speaking a foreign language. And you don't know if it's because of things that haven't been reinforced, or haven't been taught throughout the years. You know, you talked about being able to make students independently think, and make them have skills that's, that will help them to advance in this world. You know, recently, I know there was a bill that was signed to implement financial literacy courses. And so, can you talk more about that as well, and why it's so important that students in K through 12 have these skillsets?
Sure. Well, I mean, the goal always with kids in, in public education, or any form of education, lower ed, form of education, really is for them to be independent, once they've come through the system. And financial literacy is not something that's taught in everybody's home. And it's something that I feel we should be responsible for educating kids about. We want them to be able to understand how credit works, how bank accounts work. In my house, we call it your paper life versus your actual day-to-day life, because both of them matter, right? So, you don't think about your mortgage on a daily basis, but you need to think about how much money you're gonna make, whether or not you can pay your mortgage and pay the rest of your bills. How your, how, when you make a payment on time or late, how that can affect your credit, how that in turn can affect your ability to get other loans, car loans, if you want to start a business, all those things, they matter. And they, they all sort of intersect at a certain point in time. And it's, you know, if we're teaching students other basic things that they need to know to be successful in life, financial literacy is a part of that. And we should not take for granted that every student comes from a home where that is part of their home-life education. By teaching everyone how to be financially literate, we all, financially literate, we all benefit in the end, right? So, for me, as a parent, if I don't have the skillset to teach my students, my kids, and I know they're gonna learn in class, and if, in a family, practical family matter, that means that my kids will understand things like loans, and how to balance a bank account, what the difference is between a bank and a credit union, and, and nine times out of 10, being less financially dependent on me, and more financially independent for themselves, which means they have the opportunity to further enhance our family legacy, and less dependent upon me doing something in order for them to have a quality of life that they, you know, is enjoyable for them. Just like a small glimpse of how it can affect individual families, but for the, themselves, I mean, that, the difference between them having their own business, or having to work for someone else for the rest of their life, whether they're in an apartment, or a home, or be able to, you know, go to the grocery store and shop, and be effective with their money. All of these things matter.
Indeed. And you just brought a very good point about being able to not only just know how to balance a checkbook. I know, and these are things that, you know, when you, you know, I remember when I was 16, and that's one thing my dad, he took me and say, you know, you're gonna learn how to, you know, open a check, you know, opening your checking account, you're gonna learn these things, so that, you know, when you make money at a job, you know where it goes, and you know how to properly budget. But you also talked about, you know, the fact of generational wealth. That's such a great point. And let's just be honest, you know, especially wars on the black community, we're seeing more than ever before. Since this pandemic has hit, now we're seeing more black entrepreneurs, and seeing more solopreneurs start their own businesses, and start to take that leap. And so, we're taking a leap, and while they're still struggling with the concept of, okay, here's how I balance it, this is how much I save for my business versus for my home. But being able to do that in homes and marginalized communities, because the only way realistically, in order for communities to rise, is generational wealth. So, like I said, it won't become depending on, you know, government programs. And while government programs are fantastic, and they're great, but at the same time, you know, one of the things in this society, it does give those opportunities. And so, I think by teaching, you know, financial literacy, and also for critical thinking, it opens the door for, you know, marginalized communities, but in black, white communities, to have those businesses, so that they can, they don't have to, maybe not everybody wants to go traditional collegiate route. Especially with, you know, student loans, you know, being an abattoir, some people's finances pretty much until their 60s and 70s. But now, maybe somebody who is 15, 16, 17 years old realizes, hey, I'm a senior in high school, I don't want to go to college. I want to go ahead and start, whether it's a beauty design business, and, you know, whether it's a book, or, or, you know, a cooking business, something of that nature, or maybe want to do something more aligned, I think we're starting to see those opportunities where now we can have more entrepreneurs than ever before. I want to bring it back for just a moment. And as you stated, you know, even though that the critical race theory is something that's not being taught on, nothing but, that's a, only the graduate level, not on the public school level. But yet, there are more and more teachers who are coming out, and even some parents, who are coming out against just teaching their true history of America. Even if it's not being taught as a theory and practice, what can be done, or should something be done, to really discuss the issues of slavery? The situations like what happened in Wilmington, 1898, Tulsa, Oklahoma, and other track events that, let's be, you know, we didn't learn that in Woodbridge.
Right.
We didn't learn that until we were in college, or another time. I didn't learn about it until I was at VCU. But what can be done to talk with students, to talk with students, but black, white, brown, what have you? To say, hey, these are really things that went on in America.
Well, I think you bring up a good point, and I think that's one of the things that I'm extremely proud about, being a Virginia resident, and being in a public, on a public school board in the state of Virginia. The state has really taken seriously this need for inclusive learning, not just from a historical point of view, when you're talking about history and civics, and government, and the history of how this coun, country was founded, but also, also, excuse me, in other subject areas. We know that representation and visibility matters, and it matters in present day, and it also matters about when you're learning about what happened in the past. You know, if, if you're a student, and you, especially a student of color, and you don't see anybody of color of any significance, whether you're talking about math, or science, or history, or founding of this country, and how they contributed, what makes you think that you have a role, or that you matter, and that you can contribute? Most oftentimes, you don't feel that way. And by teaching students that it wasn't just white people, it wasn't just Native Americans, there were Africans here, there were people of Asian descent here, and all of the ways that those individual cultures intersected and worked together, or did not work together, to get us to where we are today matters. There's a famous expression that says, if you don't know your history, you're doomed to repeat it. And, and that's what we see often in our society today. I know from my own personal experience, I was not taught a lot about African-American history, or Native American history. It was a very one-sided perspective. As I aged and went through public education, I learned a little bit more my, later in my high school years, but really and truly, it was when I got to college, and the effect it had on my self-esteem. It empowered me to go learn more. I thought to myself, well, I have to be pretty amazing if these are the people that I come from. If this is my ancestral lineage, and they did all these wonderful things, then I can do all of these wonderful things. And I think what happened, what we're seeing now is, a lot of people in the public confusing critical race theory with equity and learning, right? They're not interchangeable terms. One is the theory, it's very specific, it's taught in graduate programs, in colleges and universities. And when you talk about equity, equity is everywhere. It is, but levels the playing field for us all. And there is no shame in teaching about the rights and wrongs that happened for the past. No, no culture is perfect, right? No culture is without fault. All cultures have contributed to America and getting us to where we are now. And if we are able to step back and look at that, and see how everyone contributed, the positives and the negatives that they made to get us to where we are now, what we're doing is empowering our students. We're showing how different cultures can work together. We're showing how, when you have mistakes that have been made in history, what we can do to course correct. That's important, because those are skills that students are gonna need, or kids are gonna need as adults. You're going to need, when you go out in the world, to learn how to work with people who aren't like you. You have to learn how to accept, acknowledge, and understand when mistakes are made. And you need to know the steps that you can make, make to course correct. History is, should not be taught, or any subject really, from just one person's perspective, because we live in a, in a singular world, right? We don't all view things the same. So, it only benefits our students, and it, and it powers them to think critically, to ask questions, to explore more. And we know, when kids do that, we see great things that happen. So, the state has taken great strides. Teachers now are required to undergo cultural competency training when they renew their teaching certificates, which helps them expand their perspectives and deal with students outside of their own norms, which is a wonderful thing, right? Because it's not just a black and white issue. It's about all different cultures, and I think that also gets lost in the conversation. We're so singularly focused as a society, well, it has to be, it's black people versus white people, or, or black people and white people. And we're forgetting about all the other ethnicities and races that make this country great. We're also forgetting about all of those students and people who, individuals who are caught in the middle. People who come from multiple ethnic and racial backgrounds. They want to learn, just as much as everybody else, about all of the things that make them, them. And that's important. It's not about teaching hate, it's about teaching what happened, teaching students to deal with the positives and the negatives, how to develop skills of empathy, and how to move forward so that we can all progress together. Because we know, when we all get along to the best of our ability, then everybody moves forward. And that should be the goal for all of us.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, it's funny you bring that up, because I remember back in junior year at Woodbridge, I remember I had a conversation, this was, I believe, this was my sociology class. And we were talking, we were, you know, talking about, you know, cultures and race, and how people should identify, and so, so forth. And I started having conversations with some of my students, some white students, and there, there was a Puerto Rican student. And my father had taught me about the Young Lords. And for people who know, you know, the Young Lords were a group of Puerto Rican civil rights activists in the, in the late 60s, in New York, based in New York. And there are other Asian Americans who fought alongside the civil rights struggle. And I brought this up in a conversation. I swear, you would have thought that I was talking in Chinese literally, because people were looking at me like they had no idea what this was. And, and these are things I learned from my father, who, you know, was a junior Black Panther, and what have you. So, I was privy to some things when I was a child, but then I had, and then I remember that student, you know, she came to me afterwards, she was like, wow, you know, this Puerto Rican girl, and she said, no, I didn't know this, I didn't really know about this. And, oh, you brought that up, because I think sometimes in America, and we know a lot of it is political. We know that CRT is being used as political football right now. They can't find other things to talk about, you know, immigration, or what have you. But, and what has happened, especially here in Prince William County, and this is one of the things I, you know, can't commend you all enough on, is that equity statement, and how you and, you know, and others, you know, have, you know, Lily Jesse, Malik Ross, and so many others have, Justin Wilk have pushed for that, to say, hey, you know, we need to have equity. Equity is, hey, the student who's in the auditorium, who has trouble dealing with loud noises, get him some headphones, so he can be a part of the conversation.
Absolutely.
And, can you just talk a little bit more about that, about what it meant? You know, for, we have such a diverse, you know, you and I, we were at the Albert Brooks Senior Commemorative Ceremony on Saturday. And you brought your personal story.
That's you.
Powerful. And can you talk a little bit about what that meant just for you? I mean, be able to see the equity statement, and be a part of that change in our school system.
Sure. For me personally, it was very, it, just to pass that statement, to talk about it, to have it developed, everything, everything that happened to get us to the point where we passed an equity statement, is really a milestone marker in my life. After being raised and, and gone through Prince William County schools, and spent my time as a student fighting for, for my peers, equality, you know, my time on the board, I think, even before I got there, we, we were working for equality, right? And, and to move the needle beyond, let's just make everything equal for everyone, but into a case of, let's recognize that equal doesn't cover it for everyone, and acknowledge that, and from a position of authority, and to work with members of the board, and show to the public that this is a nonpartisan issue. It doesn't matter if you're a Democrat, it doesn't matter if you're a Republican. We are doing the best that we can, and making an accountable commitment to all of our students and staff, that we're gonna do whatever we can to provide you with the best work environment, to meet your needs, so that you can be successful. The best educational experience that can meet your needs, and provide you with what you need, so that you can be successful, is impactful. Because as we know, equity, equality doesn't, doesn't, it's not the finish line, right? Equity is. We can give everybody the same bookbag with the same materials in it that they need for school, and say, all right, everyone's got all the right tools, you have all your school supplies, go get busy. But it doesn't solve the problem if the child can't pick up the backpack, or if the child doesn't know how to wear the backpack, if it's too heavy, or whatever those, you know, those individual circumstances are. And to have a large division, the second-largest division in the state, say to our, our public body, hey, we recognize that even if we give everyone the same backpack, they don't know how to use it, or they can't use it, or they've never seen a backpack, they don't know how to open it, you know. Now, we're gonna go back and, and finish it up, and go, okay, well, if you need help carrying it, we'll help you carry it. If you don't know how to open it, we'll teach you how to open it. Those things make a difference, and that's what it really is. And, and I think people on the opposition say, well, you know, you can't guarantee outcomes. We're not talking about guaranteeing outcomes, we're doing the same thing we always said we would do, which would help ensure that children are capable of meeting that finish-line goal. That is the end, end-all, be-all for all of our kids. And if we're only giving you the tools, and we're not teaching you how to use them, and we're not realizing the impact that providing those tools have on a student, then we're not doing our job to the best of our ability. And that's what we all took an oath to do. So, I am really proud, and really extremely proud that I was able to be a part of that process, to be a part of a process where it was an eight, oh, you know, almost an eight to seven, seven-one vote, right? And even with the discord, it was an agreeable discord. That's momentous for me. That says that, you know, it may, things may not be right for the one member who did not vote in agreement with it, but it's, it's not, it's not the end of it. She didn't, right, say, we're not gonna do this. It's, still, we have some work in progress to do, to make everyone happy. But moving forward, and having a new superintendent that is equity-minded, only helps to further our mission. And a lot of the members of the public are interested in, how are we gonna implement this statement? And I'm excited to hear what our new superintendent has to say about that. There'll be more details to come, but I think it's definitely a step in the right direction for all of our students, because it's, again, equity is not just about our black students, or our white students, or our Asian students. It's also about our, our high-achieving students, our lowest-performing students, I mean, everybody. And I think that's, that's one of the things that's also missed from the conversation.
Absolutely. And, you know, man, I wish we had more time, we had to talk more, so, so much nuggets aside, you know, always. But I want to bring it home, I want to bring home with this. And like you said, you know, there's a, there's a momentum that's taking place now. Momentum that we've never really seen, and, you know, we've, we've been here our lives. We, we're starting to see more diversity, we're starting to see more representation. And we may never get to the point where everyone is on board. You'll all have people who believe in certain traditions, and they'll hold on to certain things. That being said, as you stated earlier, you know, this is about make sure everybody has the opportunities, and can level the playing field. To the teachers who may not understand, and are still trying to come to grips with, hey, we live in a multicultural world. And you have, like I said, implicit bias, and cultural biases are being dealt with. Are you seeing it have an impact on how they approach their classrooms, or maybe their teaching? For those teachers, like I said, administrators, are we, are you beginning to see that, hey, this is working? Is there something that says there's some level of progress that people can take from it, and say, okay, this is, it's still work, but it's, we're getting there?
So, I, I've had the opportunity to hear a lot of anecdotes from our teachers, and actually, some of our administrators on, you know, they went and took a course on reading the White Fragility book, and, and they were in a reading group, and brought to their attention so many of the things that they didn't even realize were thoughts or feelings of their students in their class of color, and, and the cultural differences they had. I heard from a student who, excuse me, from a teacher who said, you know, I never realized that the way that I act in, at my house, it could be different than the way that a student has been raised in their house. Thought about it from the perspective when you're out in public, but I didn't realize how my behaviors and my expectations, and my culture impacted how I viewed a student's behavior. It's, it's, you know, tough, the stories that I, I hear about are like, for example, yelling is really common, right, in a large family home. Well, this teacher didn't come from a large home, and everyone talked pretty quietly, and so, every time she interacted with the student, the student sounded loud, and, you know, had no problem shouting from across the room, and teacher thought, well, this is a disruption. And after learning about, you know, her own biases, and examining her own upbringing, and how she brought that with her into the classroom, she was then better able to deal with the student. Instead of looking at the student as a disruptor, it was, hey, let me impart some new behaviors, some new ways that you could learn to act in my classroom. And it went from being a, as a student who was constantly in trouble, or being told to quiet down or sit down, to a student being able to learn some new skills, and that teacher, and then having a new perspective on that student. And I think that those are, that's a good example. It doesn't deal with race, it's just the culture you come from, right? Your family background. But it, it changed the whole dynamic for that teacher and that student's interaction. The teacher no longer looked at the child as a behavioral problem, but now it was, how can I, how can I give this, impart this student, you know, more collaborative relationship, right? How can I impart this student with other skills that clearly are, are not used in their home, but are beneficial in the classroom? And so, I think, you know, I don't have a lot of data, right, hard data on numbers, and facts, and figures at this point in time, but I know that that's coming. And I know it's going to make a difference in how our staff interacts with our students, how our students feel comfortable in a school. And, you know, you have to feel comfortable and safe in order to learn. So, I think that that's gonna make a big impression on the relationships, and the teaching styles that our staff has. You know, it's one of those things, I can remember being in school and having a teacher, I, I use this example a lot. I was in a history class, and my teacher goes, I'm looking at the history book, and I go, you know, why is there a picture of Columbus, right? There's no picture of Columbus. There's, how do we know this is really him? Like, we don't have, no one's ever painted a picture of him, right? And so, my teacher goes, well, you know, Ms. Williams, it's in the, in the book. I, I respect what you have to say. Let me be honest with you. You're correcting what you're saying, but this is what I have to teach you. And so, I'm gonna ask you, can we just get along for the sake of this history class, and do what we have to do, take your exam at the end? And I said, you know what, I respect that. I'm sorry?
What grade was this in?
Uh, this had to be 11th grade.
I'm trying to think, what, do I know the, you know what?
I had a teacher, he was retiring and moving to Florida, and gonna open a hot dog stand, and told everyone, he was so excited, right? And for me, as a student, you know, I, I always, I was always like sort of a troublemaker, right? I'd find something in class, and I'd be like, this isn't right, I don't want to learn it, I don't understand why you have to learn it. And most of the ones I get from the teacher is, well, that's my job, this is what I'm instructed to do, sit down and learn, and deal with it, right? And I had this, and he goes, he goes, you know what, Ms. Williams, completely respect your right, you're absolutely correct. However, let me make you a deal. I'm gonna tell you the truth, you can share the truth with me, but we're gonna learn this material, so that you can pass this test at the end. And I said, oh, that's great. You know, I sat down and learned everything. I didn't disrupt his class anymore. I just sat back, because he heard me. He understood, he took the time to put his own self aside, deal with me as a student, understand where I was coming from, listening. And I think that's really what it's about. When you examine your own implicit and explicit biases, your own cultural expectations, and you're able to not only hear yourself, but hear the people that you're interacting with, then it only makes your relationships better. It, it gives you a point of reference and understanding. It helps, it helps us not be fearful of what we don't know, but go into it with an expectation of, I don't know this, or this is unfamiliar to me. Now I have tools, because I've examined my own self, I can now develop and build a relationship with someone who is different from me, because I know where I stand. Now it's time for me to learn where somebody else stands. I have the skillset that I know I need to be able to interact with that person. And when you're talking about education, it's all about that. It's all about communication. It's all about the betterment of our staff and our students, and the relationships that they build. And anything we can do to make those relationships better, to deepen that understanding, I think is only beneficial for all of us. It's a model for our kids, so they learn how to do that outside of the school system, and it creates a safe learning environment for our staff and students.
Absolutely. And I guess,
I'm really proud.
And it goes both ways, you know, the teachers are learning, and even the students are as well. They're learning to see outside their own bodies. And I think just by doing that, we, we can be able to get to that point where, you know, we don't have to have these debates, or also about critical race theory, because we're living it out, and people are coming, you know, they're thinking outside their own culture, thinking outside their own experiences, and seeing it from someone else's point of view.
Absolutely.
You know, the, it just, kudos to you and the school board, and all the amazing work you've done. And we can't wait to see what Dr. McDay does. And we can't wait to see what Dr. McDade does going forward. I know you're excited and everyone else is excited and.
I'm very excited, she's well under her way for her hundred-day tour. She's been to several schools and she's got more on her, on her agenda. She's been talking and to staff, both at the Kelly leadership level and, but also principals and teachers and really getting out there in the community and, and getting to know her Prince William County schools families and staff. And that's how you, that's how you get it done. So I'm really excited, I think the focus that she brings along with what's going on at the state level, we are, are really sort of becoming one and, and the lens of equity and doing the best that we can for all of our students. And, and I will say, one of the good things, even before Dr. McDade started, is that, you know, three years ago, we gave students the opportunity to sit on the board and powered them, right? And they made that office, those roles their own. And be out of that, now we have a Student Senate. And now, as of last year, because of COVID, and one of the beautiful things that happened with COVID is that the students interacted from other schools. So now they have associations that are school division-wide. So students from Colgan, who are in, I don't know, the Black Student Alliance or the Kindness Club can now talk to students at Garfield who are in a similar club and students at Battlefield, Battlefield that are in a similar club. That's the goal, right? They've taken something, made it their own, expanded upon it, and are, are making ways for the students who come after them, and that's, that's all we can ask for. So I know it's working and I'm excited and it's only going to get better.
And there would have thought the day would come where we would get Woodbridge and Garfield students and Potomac students coming together on anything.
It's come a long way. That's what I tell some of my peers, I say, you know, one of the things we always have to be mindful is we're not raising kids to live in a world that we live in, we're raising kids in a world that they'll live in. And when I hear about students having a kindness club, when I hear about the alliances formed from all the different schools in the county so that they can share their voice and, and make it better for the younger students, I mean, it just fills my heart with joy and just students having a voice, right? That's hurt is amazing. I remember all the battles I had, you know, helping people start, I think we had a black student choir at Woodbridge.
I remember that.
Oh, we can't do this, trying to find a sponsor to come from that, having kindness clubs and clubs that cross the school division as leaps and bounds. It's amazing what our kids are doing and what we, when we get out of their way, we can empower them to do. It's going to make the world a better place for all of us, that's, that's the goal.
Absolutely, now, and, and when it comes to sports, I still want to talk my smack about Garfield and then, keep that one hundred, that's never going to go away.
Well, that's never going to change.
Oh, no, but you're right, this is, it's just been amazing, you know, and I know we're over time, I'll just, let me say this. I remember Friday, last Friday, when I was at the memorial service at Hilton for Anthony Cruz Santos, the young man who sadly lost his life tragically. There were students not just from Hilton, there were students from other schools that were coming in the area. And the, the beautiful thing about it is, as you said, it's kind of what you're saying, that we're starting to see more and more, even in the most tragic moments, the community is coming together, it's not about school ties anymore, you know? Like you said, you know, we grew up, there were different gang associations, it was based on where you live. If you were Dell City here, you know, you messed with Lake Ridge, you were in Lake Ridge, you dared, didn't go here to Dumfries at certain times, that, that because of efforts of what you have done, it has shattered those barriers. And we need more of that, you know, we need to push more for that. And, you know, it'll be, I know, we may never get the gun control and things of that nature, that's a whole nother topic. But I think having these clubs, I think by having these associations, and like you said, having teachers and students begin to see things outside their own boxes, we can begin to break those walls down organically, and it's not.
Absolutely, absolutely.
When we see those things happen, I think we're going to have a more unified Prince William County. And as you said, it's going to be the students, I believe, you know, ten, twenty years from now, that are going to make, what you are doing now, twenty years from now, it's going to be your son, it's going to be others who are going to bring this county together and going, we're not going to have this eastern versus western, I think we will have a true one Prince William County.
That's, that's the most exciting thing, I very much look forward to that. And, you know, we all have our allegiances, right? Like, we're always going to be a bigger fan of that team versus that team. And football is a classic example, but at the end of the day, people love football, you know? And, and that's the way we should be raising our kids. And for me, growing up as someone who's mixed-race, you know, having two parents from two different cultures, not really ever having like a home group to see these kids make their own home groups, to have commonality on many different things is, is a blessing, right? And we want to teach them in that capacity from a multi, multi-pronged view of life, the way that they're living it, we should be teaching it to them in the classroom. So they don't discriminate on whether their friend is this color brown or that color brown or no, not brown at all, right? It's, well, we both care, we both want the same, we don't want people to be bullied and they come together over topics like that. And, and why shouldn't we continue to demonstrate that education, right? That's what they're doing, we should be doing the same thing and creating those spaces that allow that to grow and nourish and, and, and be the norm. So it's exciting, exciting to watch the kids, it's exciting to, to watch the adults get on board with that and still learn how to be individuals at the same time because we're not asking people to sacrifice their individualism and who they are, we're asking them to use the and instead of the or, so more, more ands and less ors.
Certainly true, and we, and we need that, you know, and, and, you know, just, I just want to be able to bring it together. And, and just one final point, as you said, you know, not just in terms of being accepted who we are, we're becoming more acceptance of, hey, you know, everybody is different, you know, the LGBTQ plus I, I community. And, you know, giving them a safe space. People we've talked to, now, we, we run most of the same circles. And many people who have started to say, whoever's saying, hey, I can feel more comfortable coming out, being who I am, and I can go to public school and I know now I won't be bullied. I know I won't be harassed by my teachers, fellow students. And if for every reason I am, I have someone I can go to and I know someone's going to hold those people, those who are harassing accountable. Again, I would never thought we would have been to this point, but I'm so glad we are. And, you know, I just got to say, as always, you've been always a vibrant community and what you've done at School Board, just keep doing amazing things. Yeah, we're going to be, of course, I can't wait for us to talk soon. School Board meeting is in September, I believe, right?
Yes, first School Board meeting is in September. It's important for your viewers to know that there will be some guidelines coming out for virtual education in the fall, that's going to come out sooner rather than later, to be on the lookout for that, whether it's communications from your student individual school or updates on the county website, those to be coming out here in the next week or so to inform parents about virtual learning. And then also we'll have updates about what return to fall, what returning to learn will look like in the fall for those students who have opted to go in a building, that's, that's the majority of our school division. I think we're about five or six percent that are doing virtual. So we're, we're going to have updates about all of that, but the first meeting will be in the fall. We're still taking comments for people who want to share their perspective on how we should be using the SR monies. So we're welcoming all of that. People can go to the website and leave comments or reach out to their individual school member, School Board member or email the division itself. I think that that's really important, there's going to be a lot of change in the fall because we have a new administration. But I really encourage parents, if you have any questions, you can always email your School Board member, call them, call your school, but just to be mindful that things will move fast and there'll be information coming forth. But we're going to do our best to make sure everybody is aware of all the updates. And we may end up having a meeting before September, it just depends on how it goes because we want to make sure that we're doing our best to service our community. So it's really hard to get work done from a School Board perspective without meeting as a School Board. So I don't think a lot of people understand that, we can't meet outside of School Board official publicized meetings and talk about business. So it's, that separates us a little bit from some other boards. And it's really important now with all the things going on, that we stay as open and transparent as possible.
So, and you can do an amazing job with that. And we're British District Supervisor Laura Williams of the Prince William County School Board. Thank you so much for taking the time to talk with us today.
Absolutely, thanks, John, it's been a pleasure always, and I admire everything you're doing, keep our public informed, so thank you.
Do our best to can, let's do this again soon.
All right.
All right, you take care, all right.